Good evening, everyone. This is a city council workshop meeting, May 1st, 2013, approximately 6:45. Before we start in the meeting, I would like to have counsel and sentences on Councilwoman Gott extraordinary circumstances out of town. Thank you, her sister. Is that incongruent? She can be part of the meeting.
That's fine. It's fine with me. It's fine with me.
Incongruent? I'm just looking for your parents. Yes?
Fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome, Lorraine. I hope you can hear us. At this time, we'll take the first applicant from City Board, Kay LaRue. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. Kate, if you would, I'll put that microphone there. Sit down, make yourself at home, and thank you for applying. Beautification board, you have checked. Before we start, is there any other board you would like to be on, or is your specialty just...
Just the beautification.
Okay. Thank you very much. If you would, please tell us a little bit about yourself and your background to be on this board.
Okay. My name is Kay LaRue. I'm at 110th Park Avenue and have lived in that house for 21 years now. We first moved here in '72 when my dad was stationed with Patrick, and I lived in Cape Park Housing. And I worked at New Life Nursery for three years and really got to like dealing with plants and thought that I would be able to help the board with my knowledge.
Thank you. Someone would like to start?
Actually, Kay, I don't have any questions. I think you'd be a perfect fit for the beautification board.
Okay. Thanks.
Just curious, what kind of ideas do you think you could bring to the board?
I was just, I know a lot about the native plants, so if they needed to know what kind of plants would do well in certain areas, I would be able to. And I've got plenty of books at home that can be used as reference. And I just, I help my friends with their yards and stuff, so I just love plants.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree. I think, you know, you're a perfect fit for the board, and I just want to thank you for stepping up and volunteering to serve on one of our boards.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so thank you very, very much. And the way the process works at the end of the meeting tonight, the last agenda item is appointments to boards. You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like. If not, you definitely will be notified.
Okay. Thank you for these...
Does she have any conflicts with the time of the board meeting?
Is there any conflict for you on the time this board meets on that Friday morning?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Our next applicant, I'm glad you didn't use this, Sissy?
Cici.
Cici. I figured I'd be better on that one than the first one. Thank you, if you would. Thank you very much for applying, and please tell us a little, I read your great resume here. Thank you very much, and please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I was born and raised in Puerto Rico. I'm 40 years old. I have two little girls. I'm a single mom, and I live here at 766 Ventura Drive in Montecito. I have a degree in building construction. I'm actually a certified building contractor here in the state of Florida, and I used to serve on the board over in Indian Harbor Beach for a few years back when I was living there. And I'm just looking forward to getting involved and giving back a little bit to the community.
Thank you very, very much. Would you like to start?
You had a pretty impressive resume, and it's obvious that, you know, the things that you have in your background are the things that planning and zoning does. So I, again, thank you for stepping up and volunteering.
I was going to apply for a job at the building department, but actually, I work in my small, for a commercial construction firm now, so...
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that that's the only board you're interesting in, is interested in, is planning and zoning, because that's an alternate position?
Uh, I, yes. I do work full-time, so if I have more time in my hands after a couple of months, then maybe I could have another chat with you.
Just what kind of opportunities or challenges do you see for our city, just based on where you've been sitting and what you see in front of you?
Well, I've only been back here since August. I'm still kind of new to the city again. I'm not 100% familiar with the city codes themselves, but I'm kind of looking forward to being part of what happens here, getting to know who the businesses and the people that are coming to work here for the city are. So I will have to maybe give you a feedback after I start to see some plans and the businesses that are interested in building here, too.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much again. As I said before, the procedure is we vote at the end of the meeting. If you're more than welcome to stay.
What time do the, what time do the meetings held for planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning is Monday night. I think it's the third.
It's Monday night.
Third Monday.
And that works for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if there's nothing that comes before the board, the board doesn't leave.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you so much for applying. Is there any further business on...
No.
Agenda? Okay, here are none. This meeting's adjourned, and we will...
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. This is the city council regular meeting, May 1st, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please join Councilwoman Dean for a moment of silence and a pledge?
A moment of silence, please. Amen, and the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. At this time, again, as I did in the previous meeting, Councilwoman Gott has an extenuating circumstance, and I just want concurrence from counsel that you will be participating by phone.
Agree.
Agreed.
Fine.
Sure? Great. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome, Lorraine. Hopefully, you can hear us. Moving on to agenda item number three, citizens' comments on any non-agenda item.
I'm Charles Hampton, a city resident on Tequahd Avenue. My adult son has always been a surfer, and he showed me the only place in the city where you can see the beach from your car. Although city owns some major portions of the city beachfront, you cannot see the beach conveniently except for very few places. You can drive the length of our beachfront and not see the ocean except for a couple of seconds. I think some people get a feeling of relaxation by watching the waves break and seeing the ocean. As you drive by Crotty Park, you see a grassed vacant lot with the ocean up in the distance, for its two seconds as you drive by. Calling a vacant lot a park, they're not making a park. I would like to see it as a proper park with something special. At some future time, when your budget allows this, I would like for you to consider putting an elevated gazebo where people might sit in the shade and look at the ocean. I think it'll make it look like a park and would also be a service to some people. Second item. Some months ago, John Fergus suggested a means to speed up the permitting process in the city by staggering the board meetings, dates into a logical sequence so that it not be a month before each meeting. That seemed like a good idea, and I wanted the council to consider acting on it.
Totally, we have, and that is in the process.
I think, I think it might be advantageous to have the city manager address the parking too, because there is a plan through the agency that we're looking at doing some improvements there.
I'm not sure it's that specific park, but certainly...
It is. That's, that's one of the ones.
That's one of the three.
It's one of the three, yeah.
And that those items are going to be provided to the advisory committee to review and start putting into a specific plan and move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any further public comments, citizens' comments? Here are none. Move on to agenda item number four, council comments. Cheryl?
You know, just one thing. I did attend the Surfside 50th Backyard Barbecue. The 50th, that's pretty impressive, and got a lot of kudos from the faculty and the parents on the crosswalks and the connectivity from east to west and also crossing the kids there at the crossing area. That's it.
Thank you very much.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. I have a prepared statement to be read into the record and copies of what I'm going to talk about, because the topic is troubling to me. On April 24th, I received a notice from the Florida State Ethics Commission that Roger Gudis had filed a complaint against me citing subsection 112.3135, section 2A of the Florida statute. This sec, this section regulates a public official's action in appointing members of his or her family to boards. The focus sentence reads in part, "However, this subsection shall not apply to appointments to boards other than those with land, planning, or zoning responsibilities." The city's planning and zoning advisory board does make land, zoning, and planning recommendations to the city council. The city council ultimately makes the final decision on the issue. While I did not advocate or speak in favor of my wife's appointment, I did vote in favor of it. Barbara and I responded as soon as we learned of the statutory limitation, and she resigned from the planning and zoning advisory board that day the letter arrived. I'm apologizing to the residents of the city for this embarrassing situation. In my 20-plus years of service to the city, I've always been advised that as a board or a council member, I am required to vote on every motion unless it has financial ramifications to me or my family. There were no financial ramifications present, as the council is not a paid position. I receive $50 a month for gas expense. The board seat is also a volunteer position. Many people in the city serve as volunteers, and most are not aware of all statutory requirements. I was unaware of section 112.31352A, Florida statute. It appeared no one else on the council, in the audience, or the city attorney was aware of it either. Further research, further research shows that whether I voted or not, my wife could not sit in that seat. The city council vote appointed her, and we acted in good faith based on the information we were provided. It's good that Mr. Gudis brought this to light as soon as, so soon after the appointment. Correcting the situation quickly averted any future issues that could have materialized from votes, from votes taken by both the board and the city council. I always appreciate residents who step forward to help us do our jobs better. However, I wish the complaint had been brought directly to my attention or to the council or the city attorney so that it could have been addressed at the local level. The civility that once existed in our city to solve things locally has been replaced recently with complaints to the state. This undermines the confidence and leadership and trust from the residents. I've always attempted to do what is right for our city and its residents. I'm grateful to be veteran-form today than a month ago. I apologize to the other council members and the citizens of Satellite Beach for my error. It was an honest mistake, and I'm submitting all of this information so it can be public record. I have nothing else.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, Councilwoman Gott, if you can hear us, is there any thing you would like to say or bring up with your comment, this council comments?
Do you want to have some council comments?
I have no comments.
Thank you. I neither have any. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. City Attorney's Report, agenda item number five.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
I have a couple items. We will be postponing the mid-year budget review that was supposed to be on your agenda this meeting, but we are postponing that until the next council meeting. We are adding your budget amendments to that mid-year budget review for the, for the mid-year, and we're also adding a mid-year revenue review as well, not just an expenditure review, but a revenue review to see where we are and keep making sure that we're keeping track on that end of things. Additionally, we have received a draft salary survey, and we will be meeting with the consultants. We have met with the consultants, actually, and they're making some changes at our request to, to better stick with the contract and what we are expecting in the scope of services. And they should be providing that to us later this week or beginning of next week. So we will provide that update to you at a future meeting. We would like to get it finalized before we provide it to you. And that's kind of how we would like to deal with a lot of our consultant products, that we review them first and kind of weed through some of those issues prior to giving you that, so you don't waste your time reviewing something we're going to change later. The other item is that we will need to cancel Councilwoman Gott's town hall meeting for May, so if that's something we would need, that's an action item we need. And we're also seeking to cancel the first meeting in June for a summer break, basically to assist us in budget preparation.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number seven, Employee of the Year Award. Jeff, you'd like to...
Good first one, man.
Yes.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. I had the distinct pleasure to accept nominations during my active tenure and make a couple of awards. I was asked in the department to get together, maybe a group of people to collectively come up with a group of, a team to pick from the nominations, and everybody decided they wanted me to do it. So I said, okay. Luckily, we got some really good nominations, and it was a very difficult decision to make, but the person I'd run to present, just because of the circumstances, is to John Fergus for the Volunteer of the Year. Is that what I need? I wanted to be standing when I said a couple of these things, because I'm sick, you know. You know, we all know that John was, for a long time, John and Councilwoman Gott were grandrathers, and of course, he did a lot of grandrathers and a lot of other things and a lot of other work, and they made a lot of sense to do those things. And of course, you know, we all know that, and then their contract was terminated, and it didn't really give a leak with John. And it wasn't just a couple of weeks later, and I had a question about something, and I called him up, and I wasn't sure how it was going to go, you know, under the circumstances. I said, I had a question about this grant, this particular thing, and he said, if you got a minute, I'll be right down and see if I can just show it to you. And there he was. And he just doesn't miss a beat. And working in the police department, I realized, wow, he did a lot of stuff for us. Then you realize that he's doing it for the private department and the red department and public affairs, and you start, you go, run and start thinking, wow, I thought you did a lot for me. And then you start to go looking at all the people, and then you start talking to all the people, hoping he does. It's not just this or just that. But, but the most impressive things that I just think that I really want to say about John, and then I'll let him go, is I think the best, the best quality, one of the best qualities, is there's no prejudgment, there's no hurt feelings, and it's complete candid information. He says, is this helpful to you if it's not for a red card? And I'm fine with that. And he, I can say, John, that's just the current thing I was seeing, and I can do that. I'm not upset at that, but I feel like I could. And he'd be like, okay, how about that? It just doesn't, it's just all about what the rest of the community looks right and how he helps. And that's just, it's just wonderful to know. And he doesn't bother you. It's the right time, it's not convenient for him, he comes back, he'll come at your time, he knows you're busy. If I put him on hold and forget about him, you know, he doesn't get upset, and he's still there to help me. And that's just, that's an admirable quality, and I personally believe that we've had a lot of fantastic volunteers, but I think if we go much longer without recognizing John as Volunteer of the Year, I think that's a trap. So I just wanted to, to correct that, put that in the record, get that established, that, John, you are a handsome guy and you're an outstanding volunteer.
Okay, the Volunteer of the Year for full-time employees this year was Paul Purvey. Paul Purvey came to us a few years ago from, I believe, the Warren County Schools, and has been doing an outstanding job taking care of Noddy and Valletta Beach Park, takes care of High Tower Park, and also takes care of the ball field restrooms during the ball field season. He not only takes care of them, but he takes ownership in the fact that they are the cleanest that they can be and spot, absolutely spotless in all of it. So all the time, you know, Paul does make sure that things are taken care of. You ask Paul to do something, he's on it like that, and Paul catches things that, that, you know, some folks might overlook, and he, he's just one dedicated employee, and I'm a bloodhound, and a red bloodhound in the department, you know, including, we had 10 more of them. So with that, I would like to, Paul?
Karen?
Well, I have the honor of re-gifting our employee, our time employee of the year back to the manager. Jacqueline has left the recreation department many years back. She was sold by Steve Hall and sold her back. So she has been doing an exemplary job with that recreation department as an effective employee. In October, she was given additional responsibilities to do special events and also a volunteer coordinator position. She's managed to target an outstanding effort of giving volunteers from the city, not just for the recreation department, but for all the departments. She's locating churches that have workers and city jobs that need workers. So she's mentioned this throughout the week, and we expect that program to grow quite well. The best special event that's still coming up, Jacqueline's part of it, that's it, is a 5K run, and you know, there's a dime a dozen, right? They're all over the place now, but the difference is with this one is it's being done as a flag run. So you are to run 5K and bring your flag and support. If you're a soldier, bring Navy flag. If you're a Surfside, hand their Surfside flag. So we're gonna have an awful lot of participation, and I expect upwards of about 8,000 to 1,000 dollars. She had the 5K just passed two weeks ago, and she had almost 600 run-ins, and that was the first run that she had. Didn't have a thing to it to be caught, but their runs are exceptional, and Jacqueline's been working strongly with our money zone to provide her 5Ks. So if it's involved in that, and if you don't have a flag, you're up. And Jacqueline didn't want to be here tonight. She was leaving on vacation tomorrow. She's not going to be here. But I did want to let you all know that Jacqueline works very, very hard on behalf of the city, the recreation department, and the stock-staffing customers, who service the natives and worth the job, and really happy to have her on the record.
Thank you, and on behalf of the council, thank you, John, Paul, and Jackie, for your hard work and dedications. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda number eight, discuss, take action on replacement, purchase of vehicle for the, from the law enforcement trust fund. Chief?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you. This week, the engine blew on one of our three criminal investigative, criminal investigations vehicles. The damage is beyond repair. The vehicle value itself is only $1,400, I think, and the damages way exceed what it would value out anyway. The other vehicle that we have is 10 years old or 11 years old and has 150,000 miles on it and is on its last legs as it is. I was hoping to, I didn't expect this car, and I was hoping the other one that we could get it along for another year, but we're just in, I guess, dire straits, as you would call, and it just happened to work out that it happened now, and, and we have the money in the law enforcement trust fund, and I'd like to replace that vehicle with forfeiture funds. That's what, that's what these cars do anyway. They're, they're criminal investigation cars. They are the ones responsible for the investigations that bring in forfeiture funds. And we, we don't regularly budget for criminal investigation vehicles. We budget for patrol cars and for admin vehicles, and then CID vehicles are usually the hand-me-downs or the, you know, the worn-out police cars, or maybe an admin car that, that's used up, that kind of thing. So we have a 2013 Ford Explorer that is available to us immediately, which is what we need, and we got lucky, because there's only, there's only really two of them on the state bid in a situation that, that we need. So if not, we'd have to wait till the new ones come out or buy an older car. And then you got warranty issues and all that, so this really actually worked out well. And we're just asking to, to spend the $26,985 plus the $1,500 to equip with just a couple of lights. It's not lit up like a police car, obviously, but it's got to have some lights in there just for obvious situations, which is a total of $28,485 in the law enforcement trust fund.
Thank you, council.
I'll make a motion to approve replacement of the purchase of the vehicle from the law enforcement trust fund in the amount of $28,485.
Second? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breymer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from the council.
Yeah, just, just one question. The money is in the trust, the law enforcement trust fund? It's there?
Yes, ma'am.
For their comments, council?
Mr. Mayor, just before you go to, I was speaking with a city attorney late this afternoon, and we were going over the, the agenda, this agenda item, and when I was explaining the, as I just did to you, it was, it was, it wasn't as clear in my memo that you have as it was in the explanation. So what I did is, is I tweaked the memo a little bit to make it, to just make it more clear, and I'd like to replace that memo with the one, all it is, just takes out a couple of things and, you know, we can get it. So if you don't mind, I'd like to just...
Yes, thank you.
It just clears up and said, unchanged anything, or there's no number of differences or anything.
And Mayor, while he's doing that, I just wanted to let you know that the maintenance cost to fix the vehicle was $1,683, which exceeds the value of the vehicle at this point. And the miles for these vehicles are in the 14, you know, 100,000, um, 400 range. I mean, they're, they're much higher than... And the other item I wanted to touch on is that the, the LOS presentations you're going to see next week, we're going to talk about vehicle replacement for the police department, but this is an example of some of the situations we're running into now, and the, you know, kicking the can down the road is now catching up with us. So the, and I just wanted to, I know we've gotten some questions on how many miles the cars have and this and that, and some of the comments from the public may be that, you know, now, you know, cars are designed to withstand 200,000 miles and more, but I think the public needs to recognize that police vehicles are driven much harder than any of our cars, and so that's why the miles are somewhat less, even though they're very high for a police car. And so I just wanted to put that on the record, that this is an example of the problems that we're having, and you're going to see that in the LOS presentations. And so we, even though we can purchase this vehicle with the trust fund, and we feel comfortable doing that, the other vehicles that we're looking at, we won't be able to do that, and we'll have to come back to you with some other funding sources to, to fix this issue.
Thank you very much. Any further council comments? Here are none. Bring this agenda item to our public comments. Any public comment on this?
Steve Hedley, I'm a resident. I basically have a simple question, which is, why are we buying this vehicle? And by this vehicle, I mean a Ford Explorer. What you'll see is a comparison of fuel cost for the Ford Explorer versus other vehicles. There are various estimates for the Explorer, but they range anywhere between 12 to 18 miles per gallon in a real-world situation. Over 150,000 miles of driving, doesn't include the car idling. That's $40,000 for the fuel of 350 a gallon. The SUV, the Ford Explorer, by Consumer Reports and Edmunds, is the worst-rated SUV on the market. It has the most mechanical problems and the most mechanical issues. It has the most mechanical problems and the most mechanical issues. Now, I realize we're in a situation in the sense where we need this vehicle and I have no problems with that and I don't want anybody to think that opposite of that. But what I'm saying is that maybe we need to look outside the box slightly for our next purchase. And I don't, I, I think that's a good thing. If you look at the Ford Toyota or the Toyota Highlander, if we go to a high grade, we save so much fuel over the Ford Explorer that it basically buys another car. For every two, we get a third. The other thing is, do we need, and I, I don't know, Jeff, I'm sorry. I don't know if we need such a huge hunkin' vehicle for this. Can a smaller SUV do the same job? And that's why the cargo space is on there as well. When you start to move into a smaller vehicle, because the, the CID vehicles are not exactly driven to chase somebody, as far as I know.
Not, not usually.
Not usually. So you don't need a Hemi, you know, or a small block Chevy in it. And my point is, if we can just look at even getting into a smaller SUV depending upon the cargo space, we end up getting a second car for every Ford we buy. And that's what, it's just a different way of looking at it. I have no problems with the car, we need it, great. But maybe, just maybe, instead of just going through the process of, here's the state bid, this is the car, no wonder it's the lowest state bid because it's a piece of trash. Unfortunately, it's garbage. And so we are paying more in fuel and we are paying more in maintenance costs and maybe just to save the, the city some money and to get the police department better and more reliable transportation, we need to look outside the box. Maybe, maybe not for this car, but down the road.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Mr. Jerry Hudson? Just concerning the vehicle, it's like, how did the, how did it happen? How did the engine blow up? Is there a, is there a vehicle maintenance plan for police department vehicles? Is there a vehicle control officer that takes care of this and makes sure that vehicles do meet the maintenance, get the maintenance that are required? Um, I heard that, um, one of our vehicles at the recent bomb scare, or bomb surge or whatever you wanna call it, uh, blew a fan belt while it was sitting there idling. It's like, that shouldn't happen on a vehicle that's properly maintained because fan valves are supposed to last a long time. But, uh, um, yeah. Like I said, this is the reason, sorry, this is the reason why we need a capital improvements plan and a way to budget it out in the future as opposed to every time something breaks, it's a crisis, we need it immediately and we can't go through proper, uh, requests for vehicles or whatever it is, is we, we need to just take a look at that. Thank you.
We are in that process right now and I believe at the next meeting or, I mean, after, that's gonna be part of the presentation. So this, we have a different way we turn them over. I know we do have a maintenance schedule and that's part of the issue right now. We don't have enough cars to take anything off the road for any period of time and it's getting to be, yes, we are in a crisis because we do not have a way that we are regularly changing vehicles and that's what Courtney has come up with a plan to do that. So that is in the works.
And if I could just add, the, our vehicles are very well maintained and that's the only reason why we're being able to get by as long as we have been, um, is because we do have a great maintenance staff and, um, and a great maintenance program. But the problem is, is that sometimes the cars get to the point where the maintenance is exceeding the cost of the, of the car. And, uh, and we need a better vehicle replacement program and that's where we're at right now is, is trying to get back on a regular schedule of that. So, um, and that's what we'll be presenting to you next week.
And that program did exist-
Yes.
-in the past. The only reason we are where we are right now is because of the economic situation that's occurred over the last five years.
Right.
And everything that you're saying was part of the way we did things in the past and the economy basically caught up with us, which has put us in this situation.
I, I do have a question. When and how did the engine fail?
Last week. And I'm not a mechanic, but there's a guy that knows sitting behind me, but it's, uh... I'm not a mechanic either, but I, I spoke, but I, but I did slay the holiday in last night. Um, no, actually, the, the, um, the mechanic, um, heard a noise coming from the engine. And it wasn't a very pretty noise. We believe that one of the timing, there's two timing chains in the engine, the, the Ford Explorer engine. We believe one of the, one of the timing chains let go and so, uh, we got estimates to replace or repair it. As the city manager said, it was sixteen hundred and eighty-three dollars, I believe, to, just to open it up to see, you know, if it could be repaired if that was the problem. It also has problems in the rear end, so there's gonna be an additional six to eight hundred dollars to repair the problems in the rear end, um, totaling about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars. The vehicle's only worth fourteen hundred. So it doesn't, and it's a two thousand and three, so it doesn't make good sense to, to, to throw good money after bad to repeat what the chief said. So, you know, trying to, you know, echo what was being said here is that we have a lot of vehicles that have a lot of miles that are costing, costing us a lot of money and it's per mile cost. And when I present the LOS next week, I'll try to illustrate exactly where we're, where we're at with the vehicles and why we're here and what is creating the problems that we're having, so.
And just to, to kind of wrap that up is, it's such a critical issue, in our opinion, that we're, we've, we've had police and public works doing a joint presentation on PD fleet to you because it's that important and, and we just wanna make sure that you all understand the situation and what we're in and, and understand why we're gonna come up with the proposals that we're coming up with, because it is an issue that we need to address really fast. I do have another-
What may, if you want, Mike, finish public comment and then we'll come right back to this. Public comment?
Ron Jergutis, Satellite Beach resident. I understand there is a vehicle issue here. Actually, that's a good job, ten years, to have a vehicle running out there. Very good issue. But I'm gonna defer comment at this time to wait for the level of services presentation and I think we'll dice down to it even further. Uh, because I do remember we, uh, were looking at in one year to understand all the maintenance costs and I'm sure our department head is gonna do an excellent presentation on that and give us all the facts on that. And I thank you for that. Police vehicle, it is what it is.
Any further public comment? See, none, bring back the council.
I just have one more question, being a girl that drives a Ford three fifty. Is there a reason why you gravitate towards the Ford versus others?
Well, that, that was the car that we had.
Okay.
We bought it used. It works out perfect for the layout. The mechanic is familiar with it because we've got Fords there, so parts and, and things are easy. It was a good car for us for those years. It had a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. We bought it used in the first place because we didn't have the money to buy it and to buy a new car, so we had to buy it from the law enforcement trust fund and we bought it used. And it, and it really did well. That's what a lot of the other agencies use. It's on the state bid and it's available right now. So you add all that together and it worked out good for me.
Okay, and just, just one other issue regarding the capital improvement plan. I've been harping on this since I've been in office, you know, for a year and a half. During an economic downturn, there's no better reason than to have a capital improvement plan in place. So, uh, the economy, uh, hasn't turned in the last two years, it's been turning for years and, and there's just really no excuse for the city not to have a capital improvement plan and to be in a predicament we're in and also a vehicle replacement plan. So, um, it, it should be in place all the time and it should be adjusted according to the income that we're bringing in to make sure that we are, are running properly and do have the vehicles we need for our, uh, police and fire.
Thank you.
Just, um, to touch on what Steve brought up, are there other vehicles that are on state bid? I mean, some of the vehicles that are on this list that he gave us, are there state bid contract pricing for some of these vehicles that get better mileage?
I, I don't know about all of them, but I know that there's some on here that are not on state bid. Uh, they're, not, not every, not every vehicle out there is on state bid, which then makes you have to go through more hoops in order to deviate from the state bid because then people get a little concerned about when you're making purchases that are not out, that are not been vetted out through the statewide, you know, pricing that everybody's getting. So, uh, I, I can't say that there's not one single one on here that's not on state bid. I know there's several on here that are not, uh, but-
It might be, it might be something to just, you know, as we're going through the levels of service to, to really figure out what's there and maybe if there's something that we can implement that's going to be, you know, better long-term, um, we at least have the option of looking at it.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any further?
Just one other thing, I, and Alan may remember this. I remember years ago when we were looking at police cars and that sort of thing, the repair costs that typically occur starting now through August and September because the excess heat that those vehicles go under. Um, I mean, I, I just remember at one point how much they broke down during that particular time because it's just those things run twenty-four seven and the, and they were constantly being overheated with, just running all the time. So I don't know if there's, if you, if you need to look at the seasonal aspect of it or not, but I know it was one thing that we had in the past, Alan. It was, it was rough on those cars when it used to be a hundred outside, you know, so...
One, one other thing, and this is really for the city manager, I, I think we have one mechanic, correct?
Yes.
Maybe there's a, a more efficient way to maintain our vehicles, whether it's a contract with a local, uh, company. Um, that's a lot of work for, for one individual, so...
We, uh, before we hired the mechanic that we have now, we did have, uh, contract maintenance. And the issue that you fall into with the contractor is the, um, the downtime because he's not only taking care of the city of Satellite Beach, he's taking care of his own customers and he's got a profit to meet. And so you bring a car in, I can turn it around or our mechanic can turn it around in a matter of days where it might sit at a contractor for three, four days. And, you know, if, if he says, I can't get the parts, you have to believe him and it's, it happened numerous times prior to us hiring our own mechanic. I think we've had very good luck keeping the cars running that, that we have, given the age and the mileage on a lot of the vehicles that we have with, with, kudos to Jim Day because he, you know, he's really been able to do a lot of things with these cars that typically, you know, you wait, you take it to a, take my own vehicle to a shop, it's gonna take a couple of days to get it back and Jim concentrates and makes sure, makes sure that the public safety vehicles are taken care of first. And that's, that's the bottom line. So, I mean, we can explore those, those issues and we can explore a contractor, but to me, when we're dealing with public safety, I think timing is, is everything and I just hate to have a police car sitting at a mechanic shop for two or three days while he's working on one of his better customer's cars. That's, that's the only issue that I have with that.
And I, I will say, I remember back when we had those cars sitting for several days because you couldn't get parts or you'd get the wrong parts. Uh, and then there were the timing issues and you hit the weekends and all that sort of thing. I remember that really well, which is why we're at where we are now.
Right. And the other, the other issue is the, the public perception aspect of it. Um, we'd have two, at, at times, two or three, uh, police cars and, and they, granted, they weren't always active police cars, they may have been a CFP car or something like that, sitting out on A1A, people driving by, seeing police cars sitting there wondering what's going on. So it's a public perception issue as well, you know?
You know, I, I get it and that was then and this is now, so it still should be investigated to see which, I mean, you can write it into the contract that they have to turn the parts or whatever. Yeah, anytime, we'll always look in to see if there's a cheaper, better way to do it, but I, I would have to concur with staff on, um, most cities try to keep the, particularly public safety, maintenance in-house largely because of the convenience factor. And, um, and it's, you know, it, we can let, we always look in, into it and we're looking into it every year to see if, if we can do a cost savings there, but, um, I would agree.
And one of the things that I remember well, I already mentioned the overheating, that was one of the things that overwhelmed that particular mechanic is that the cars were overheating and they were just going down after down after down. It couldn't, couldn't, and Ford or whoever it was couldn't figure out what the problem was, so those vehicles sat for days. I remember that very well.
That's what, okay, you remember it too, okay.
One of the things I know will happen is when we get into a better rotation and we look at this, the maintenance costs should go down because we will have better cars on the road, so-
Because we shouldn't be doing reactionary, it should just be a continual preventative maintenance replacement.
And we just gotta hit our ducks in a row.
The mayor, just for the record, I do certify that it's a valid expenditure from the, uh, law enforcement trust fund.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further, um, comments, council? Here are none. Um, Lenore? Or, oh, joy, excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Lorraine, um, is, would you like to make a comment on this agenda item?
I would like for, uh, the city park to repeat the motion. I'm having some trouble hearing what being said, so if you could repeat the motion for me. Can you hear me?
Yes. Uh, the motion was to accept, uh, to be able to purchase and authorize the state bid holder to purchase the vehicle in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars-
From the law enforcement-
-from the law enforcement trust fund.
Okay. I have nothing.
Thank you. Lenore, you poll the council?
Councilwoman Deena? Yes. Councilwoman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion, passes five, nothing. And thank you for reminding me about Lorraine there. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thanks, Alan, appreciate it. Um, moving on to agenda item number nine, discuss take action on organizational plan for City Hall.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to speak loud enough for councilmen to hear, so if I'm speaking loud and it sounds weird to you, I'm sorry. And it, when I was appointed to be your city manager, there was, you have some goals that you have, uh, created for fiscal year thirteen and part of that is to restore stability to city government and more specifically determine the optimal organizational structure and in-house staffing. With regards to City Hall, um, I've put together an organizational plan that will solve some of our immediate issues and then also looking down towards fiscal year fourteen and fifteen, um, in terms of coming together for, for basically a long-term plan to add some resources to the administrative functions at City Hall. Um, some of the functions at City Hall, of course, are the city manager's office, the finance department, uh, IT is housed in, in the City Hall. Um, we have one IT specialist that, that takes care of all of our informational, um, information technology needs. Uh, human resources functions are in City Hall as well as the city clerk's office, building and zoning, and the community redevelopment agency, and grants administration. In the past, we have, I'm not gonna go through how much City Hall has lost in terms of staff. You'll see some of that during the levels of service, um, but I think you all are very familiar with the cuts that have been made. Some of the issues, though, that we do have is that, um, in terms of my department or my office, when I leave, uh, out of town or if I was to leave the city, there's really no one to designate as an acting city manager, um, aside from department heads. And in the past, what's happened is the city manager would rotate department heads to take that, that position. And because there's some dual office holding issues with police chief and fire chief, um, it doesn't leave a lot of options. So basically trying to create a succession and, you know, a, an assistant, um, is one of the goals that I'm trying to achieve with this reorganization. The other issue is that we do need- The other issue is that we do need to create, there's definitely a need to create some better reporting, different procedures, and basically overhauling the finance department. In addition, we have a need to add procurement and contracting and centralize that to City Hall. We do not have a centralized procurement policy with regards to RFPs, RFIs, anything of that nature. We do have a bid regulation, but it's really not centralized into one department, okay? Which is how most municipal governments, big or small, handle that. And we also have a lot of turnover in the clerk's office. I think everybody recognizes the work that Lenore has done. She's very, very busy. Part of the problem that's been in her department is a full-time position has been made into two part-time positions. And when you're looking at the clerk's function, the clerk's office is a professional department, so it's not like an administrative assistant department where you, or what I could say an office clerk. The staff in that department are trained, they belong to professional organizations, there's statutes that they have to be familiar with. And so, when we have turnover in that department, it's like we just train people to walk out the door over and over and over again. And that's what's occurring at this time. And when that happens, all of the work gets put on one person, which has been Lenore. So, really, all it's done is, in an effort to save money, we've really just cost ourselves more money. So, we're paying people for less quality work in putting more work on our current staff. That's all we've accomplished with that scenario, that staffing scenario. I think we need to recognize the need for longevity in the public, in the public sector we cherish longevity because institutional knowledge is incredibly important, particularly in an office like the clerk's office. I can't tell you how many times clerks call former clerks to get information from them. So, we need to be able to create full-time positions in that department to keep people there for the long term. And that's a priority. In this case, the clerk's office, if we had, if those two part-time positions were transferred to a full-time position, they're staffed enough to deal with spikes in demand. So, when you have well-trained people that are invested in their positions and are invested in the city for the long term, you can deal with temporary spikes in workload. So, to deal with those changes, what we would like to do is basically to eliminate the finance director position and turn that budgeted amount into, to fund a different position. And that would be to approve an assistant city manager slash director of support services. So, this person would be an assistant city manager, basically, would have those skills, but also would be basically the director of the support services department, which would encompass finance, human resources, information technology, and then we're adding a purchasing and contracting function to that department. We would, we're asking for the conversion of the two part-time positions in the clerk's office to one full-time position. And then we are also asking for authorization to continue the HR coordinator position until the end of the fiscal year. At the beginning of the year, the council authorized the creation of a HR coordinator, but only for six months. And that six month is here. But for some reason, it was budgeted until the end of the year. And I'm not sure why.
I can tell you why, if you don't mind. We budgeted it for half a year, but at four months, we were supposed to get a complete update on the personnel policy handbook and all the other forms that that person was working on. We haven't gotten that yet.
Okay.
So, it was to see what kind of progress was made on the personnel policy handbook, which is archaic, and all the other forms that aren't in place such as acknowledgement of the handbook and things like that, and other personnel forms, and we never got an update at four months. So, it was to see what progress was being made and if we were going to continue with that position or not.
Okay. And I'd like to address that. We put together a team to begin the personnel policy revisions with staff and with the HR benefit coordinator leading that charge. But it is, a four-month period to revise personnel policies is very, very quick. I'd be shocked if we would ever be able to turn that around that fast.
It wasn't to have a final product, it was just to give an update on where they were.
Oh, okay, okay.
We've never gotten that.
Okay. So, we are doing that now. And I'm expecting that to take at least a year. It takes, you know, we have a lot of bargaining and other issues. And yes, you are right, those personnel policies are pretty archaic. So, we are moving forward with that, but we would definitely, we are asking you to provide authorization to keep that position until the end of the year as part of this. Currently, we, for this current year, this organization plan, aside from the severance package that you'll see in your next agenda item, the impacts for the salary and benefits for the current budget and then the new reorganization would not exceed this year's budget. So, we are within this current year's budget and next year, you'll see an increase in the budget due to this reorganization by about $1,000, $1,500. There are some noteworthy changes. We would like to, I did provide some organizational charts for you to see the differences and show you how the support services would function very similar to any other department that we have. And we're asking, I provided immediate changes for fiscal year 13 and then a longer-term plan as we move forward and as funding allows to eventually get to this point. I think we do have some other priorities that we're going to present to you, hopefully, with our levels of service and our proposed budget. However, as time moves on and if we are able to add these other positions to City Hall, this would be, this would allow the staff to function currently at a good level. Right now, the city, or in the past, the city had a grants administrator that worked about 15 hours a week on grants administration. That position's no longer there. The assistant finance director, is she here? Yes, there she is, is now doing that. We had an AP accountant, that AP means accounts payable, that is a full job. I see it every day when I sign off on those. And the assistant finance director is also doing that job. So, their finance department is very crunched in terms of workload. And the other issue is that we have a community development director position that has never been filled from the previous, previously filled, now it's not there anymore. But I think for the CRA, what I'd like to do is handle that with myself and then also with the assistance of the building department and operate like that for a couple of years until we get the CRA going. And at that point, if we do need to hire somebody specifically for the CRA, then we can look at that. But I think we'd save a lot of money for the CRA if we function that way. So, that's pretty much where we're at in fiscal year 14. In 15, we're looking at adding another accountant position to finance to alleviate some of those duties. The, there's a, currently a staff assistant that's in the finance department. I would like to eventually move that position to be my administrative assistant to the city manager's office. And then also, the building department has been one of the departments that sustained a lot of staff reductions. And also add a part-time building code inspector to that department. But that is a long-term plan, we may not be able to afford that in the immediate future. So, but if we, as funding allows, that's how we would like to proceed. I did provide a job description for you. I did provide a revised one that we passed out just to cover some of the formatting and language errors in the one in your agenda. The job title should be the assistant city manager slash director of support services. We added some language changes to the minimum qualifications. And then also, in the note on the last page, there's a description regarding, or a statement regarding accommodations for ADA and we revised that sentence to make it clear. So, that's the changes that we made to that job description. We did provide a salary range research for that position. And then, so the salary range for that position would be $71,715 per year as a minimum and a maximum of $108,653. Or $653. And so, with that, I'd like to get your approval on the overall plan, specifically the current or the immediate changes that we would like to make this fiscal year and then tentatively for the next year 14 and 15. You would see those changes with your budgets if that's something that we could, we could add to the, as funding allows, basically.
Thank you.
I kind of like, I kind of like the idea, the fact that you're looking at doing things within the budget this year, but looking out into the future to make sure that we have what we need. And it sounds like we're going to be able to do it financially where it's not too much of an extra burden to the city. You know, I'm well aware of the issues that have gone on in City Hall as far as the turnover of people. And you're absolutely right, it's crucial that we have people there with some history. You know, keeping people in these positions is what makes the city operate better for the residents. And that's been lacking in the last year and a half because there's not anyone there that pretty much knows what's going on. And it was pretty apparent last year that that was happening. So, I'm looking at all of this and I know that the city's been in a position where we've needed to look at doing some things differently. And I think this approach is a proactive approach because when the former city manager was let go, there wasn't anybody. There was no succession program in place for the city. And that's what this position would do, is provide someone to at least step into the position who's aware of what's been going on and is knowledgeable and able to handle the situation. And it was pretty apparent that that wasn't there last year.
Courtney, the question I have is, I know you're doing the finance department changes and that sort of thing. Are your changes in line with the accounting software and everything that you proposed to implement? I mean, it'll all work together type of thing? Software's going to match people and vice versa?
And that's why we didn't want to propose an accountant position right away. So, but the HR position at this point is crucial to that department being able to function. If we took that position out, the finance department would have to take it over right now and there's literally two people left in that department to deal with that.
Okay.
It just can't, they can't do it anymore. The second thing I wanted to add is the, it was very crucial to me to make sure that we do have a succession plan, but also to understand that there's just not enough work for an assistant city manager, a finance director, and me. It's just, we're a small city, we don't, we're just not that large. So, I wanted to combine those two positions and so that position, you know, has to have both a financial background, but also be able to be a manager as well. So, it's an odd position, but it's not unusual. I did see some of those positions in searching through League of Cities and through FCCMA. So, you know, I think it will work well for us in terms of being, both being able to handle the day-to-day operations of a department, but also the overall city manager issues that come up, particularly if I'm not around.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I was out and about a lot this past weekend and I've gotten a lot of feedback on this and a lot of citizens are not happy with an assistant city attorney. They feel that the community is 2.4 square miles and it's not necessary. And it could be just the title that we're calling it, assistant city manager. It's a high-paying job. They're also not happy about that, the salary range. It's unfortunate, you know, it's not the city council's decision whether or not the finance person was put on administrative, believe it or not, it's a decision the city manager makes. But now we're at a point where we're going into a budget and looking at levels of service, looking at a capital improvement plan, and we have no one to fill those shoes again. As far as the succession plan, you know, I'm in an office a year and a half, there should have been that a long time ago. Although I don't have a problem with another position or a department head that serves those purposes, I do think that the salary range is way, way out there and I don't think it needs to be assistant city manager. I think that you're going to, I think that the community's not going to be happy with that. I think it's 10,000 people, 2.4 square miles, and I don't really think that that's really necessary.
See, I would look at that as, you know, what we were paying the finance director to do the finance stuff, we're going to get an assistant city manager who's going to be able to do finance stuff also. So, we're getting more bang for our dollar going in this direction than we have been in the last direction that we were at. This is a better scenario for the city than where we were. And that's the reality of it.
Let me, Councilwoman Gott, you have a, like to make a comment on this agenda item?
Would you like to make a comment on this agenda item?
I would just like to say that I think that this is a very thoughtful proposal. I think the city manager did an excellent job on this. It's certainly preferable to the way we're structured now, which over time has just evolved into something that doesn't make a lot of sense organizationally. And I support this proposal.
Okay, thank you very much. I saw a department be able to run because the succession was there. And it happened to us in December when Police Chief Pearson stepped away and it took him a phone call, a letter, and the department functioned. And I think all of our departments in the city really need to be able to function that way. And if it's a certain title or name, you know, names and title doesn't mean a lot to me as much as it does, does this make our system function better? And, you know, hopefully, nothing happens to Courtney, but we need to have this succession plan, I think. And I know the fire department, it works, we know it works in the police department, it just happened. So, I don't believe it'd work in City Hall if we didn't make this adjustment. And if it's title and salary and my city manager tells me that it's going to fall within the budget that is set, I think we're kind of in a win situation here. I think we're going to gain this position that's going to really help us. It's a finance director who's going to have a little more power or, excuse me, bad choice of words, a little more authority. And I think it will help us personally. So, I like it and I hope though that we make sure that we keep the budget in line and the salary one in line.
The other thing, Courtney, I would ask is, you know, with any reorganizational effort, plan or whatever, I think that part of this should include you coming back to us in, I don't know, every six months or so and let us know how it's working out so we can tweak it. You find something that's not particularly...
If you find something that's not particularly running smooth, obviously, you're gonna make those changes. But I think that would probably help engender a little bit of support throughout the community if we get a report on how, how this is working type of thing.
Yeah, and one, one thing I would like to add, cause you and I talked about the, the wage study that's been done. As part of their contract, they were supposed to look at reorganization. They have a pretty expensive contract and it kinda went back to the drawing board because they didn't provide a lot of information. Have they looked at this in the co-sharing of this? Because maybe we're just putting the cart before the horse a few weeks early until that, that wage study comes out.
Um, I added, I asked them to include, you know, this position and job classification in their study. It's graded in their recommendation, within their recommendations currently. And the other item is that, you know, the position itself, it's appointed position, um, and it's, uh, Assistant City Manager position, um, slash department head. So it's, it's unlike, you know, where you have four or five administrative assistants or, you know, it's, it's a, it's similar to my position, uh, quite frankly. Except that the appointment is from me and not council. Um, but I did, but I did include that. I asked them to look at it and include that into the study. And when they provided their draft with their ranges, their job classification ranges, we made sure it was in line with that.
Let me open it up, um, for citizens' comments on this agenda item.
I'll ask you to disregard the comments that I wrote and, and passed around. Very difficult for me to comment on this. I'm greatly concerned about it. I wish, this, this has kinda dropped on us out of the blue. And it's very difficult. I don't know how any of the citizens can understand what's going on, cause it's a really small number of people here tonight. And you, we got an oral briefing about what it was going to be and, and there isn't any clarity exactly what's going to do. And I think it might've been helpful if somehow you had held a workshop, which you would therefore have discussed this, uh, and people could know about it. You could have a plan. Um, it seemed apparent to me that you, you've, uh, lost your Finance Director, so you can't have a Finance Director. It appears to me that would need to be a very high-level accountant. So you make a position in which you're hiring an Assistant City Manager who is a high-level I don't know whether, whether the City Manager was given directions from you when she took the office to start off with a clean shape, a clean sheet at, at a very early time. And, um, I, I can see, you can only have one, one person in charge and if you sort of have two city managers, or, or if this city ma, the Assistant City Manager has, has supervision over employees on their own, then the, the City Manager is the only person that is accountable for this. I don't know enough about this to comment further on it, except to say that the, the city has gone through a lot. We had 25 years of stable government and then we had an awful year last year in which everything was, was changed. And now I would feel more comfortable if, if the City Manager had, had enough experience on here to see what needs to be done. Right now, we don't know really what's going to be done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Further comments? Um, Carol?
I guess I'm one of the old school. Several red flags came up in my mind. The first one was money, the budget. I heard you talk about the budget, saying you were able to do it within it. And of course, my mind went back to the beach caster. The beach caster was in the budget, should've happened. Nothing has gone out with communication since November. Um, we talk about the need to let people know. The beach caster was one way to let them know. And yes, I'm due to come in to talk to you about that, but I don't think it's money we should automatically say can go to some other position. So that's money and communication. The other thing is, we talk about history. I think of our Finance Director. She'd been here a long time. And to come and have her on administrative leave, I'm saying, huh? You've got a council, you've got a new city manager. Perhaps a little bit of time should be taken to see if they can interweave. And then I worry about Lenore. Lenore, I gotta ask, may I ask her a question, please?
Sure.
Okay, I need to ask you. Is she a part-time person? Certainly seems to me like she's worked full-time for as long as I've been aware. And I keep hearing, well, we've got two part-time people. I don't understand. And so those are my red flags. I'd really like to see you take a little bit of time and think about it.
Thank you.
If I tried to hold this up to real life with a shit jacket.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Jagudis, resident, Satellite Beach. Ordinance 1069, job description. It's amazing that I hear that our Finance Director-
Sir, we are not on ordinance 1069.
No, you're not.
Okay, so we did.
That's correct.
Okay.
I will withdraw that.
Thank you.
Didn't know our Finance Director left. Didn't know that it's administrative leave. Didn't know till Friday or Saturday when the agenda came out. I've had clashes with the Finance Director. It's quite obvious. And I don't have a problem with that. And I don't think the Finance Director should have a problem with that either. I'm just mesmerized by the fact that you're gonna have an Assistant City Manager who's gonna, another title position here. And I keep hearing from the last meeting that we had a clean audit. We had a clean audit. What's going on? And that's all right. I understand. City Manager is a new person here. I get it. There could've been other issues. I get it. But I don't understand it. I get it. I do not understand it at this point. And I hope this city council has gotten up breath and strength to carry this forward. And I wish you the best of luck on this. I would like to make some further con, comments, but I will not do that at this point. Thank you.
Hey, fine citizen. I attended the town hall meeting with the chairman and the new city manager. I asked quite a few questions, so maybe I'm a little clearer than some of the people. I totally support this program. The new city manager was requested by council to hit the bricks running. It's exactly what she's doing. Nothing wrong with restructuring. I'm not a big believer in the clean sweep methods. I've taken over many organizations and I have a different way of doing things. However, two things come to my mind. When we lost our city, long-term city manager of 27 years, we had a political, in my opinion, political appointee that was totally unqualified to be city manager. Had absolutely no background as a city manager. We finally got Chief Pearson to take over and we hired a qualified city manager with a varied background. She might not have a city manager's background per se, but a varied background in city government. She is doing what council asked her to do. And that is to do some reorganization, be as efficient as possible, and save us money. I totally support this idea. Two things come to my mind. Number one, when we lost our long-term city manager, as I mentioned, we definitely had somebody that was unqualified. Another thing comes to my mind is a former council member made a comment. Because one of our councilperson passed away and within three days before he was buried, we decided we had to have an emergency meeting to replace him immediately because what would happen if two councilmembers got, got run over by a truck? My goodness, we wouldn't have a quorum. You know, God goodness gracious, what would happen if, God forbid, something would happen to our city manager? We'd be up in the air again. So I think that she should have an assistant that, in, in training, just as we had a city clerk in training before her, and, and she was able to step right in whenever the city clerk, the other city clerk retired. So you have continuity with the ideas she's, she's bringing forward. I totally support this. Uh, and I wish people would, would've come to the, uh, town hall meeting. Maybe they would have a clearer understanding of, on what we're trying to accomplish or what the city manager's trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments?
Steve Osmer, citizen. I'd like to echo probably just a few points. And this kinda goes back even to times that I ran for council. Some of the statements that I had made. One of the biggest problems I had that I saw here was single-point failure. I think this is one of those things that we talk about, and this is an excellent idea when you talk about a succession plan. We should not have single-point failure anywhere. If for some reason that something happened to the city manager, the next day, we should pick up where we left off and keep moving. It should never happen anywhere, a single-point failure. Um, as far as what's being put out tonight, I've had days to review this. I have taken hours to review it. I've gone through it line by line and actually tried to find something wrong with it. But I think we go back to what we say, it is, we waited a long time for action. And I know many councilmembers here have all talked about how we keep waiting and we're trying to push things through and nothing's happened. And as we directed, we wanted a city manager to come in here and get things going. Since January, this is the most motion I've seen put on the floor to talk to this council to do anything. Now, this is a lot. It's a big chunk for, I think, a lot of people to take under one belt. But again, you can always tweak this, you can always change a little bit as we go. But I think the time of stalling and waiting and hopefully come up another idea, especially when it fits into a budget that we've already agreed upon, this is a good direction to be heading in. I mean, lastly, I'll tend to agree on the pay may be a little high. But I go by that by a couple standards. One, most people will make that because they'll compare what they're making and think that's a high position, that's a high pay. Um, I always look at it as, I always think for a city, I look for the Police Department and Fire Department, I always think they should be the highest-paid guys. I just look at it as because those are the guys, I always wanna show up at my house when I'm in an emergency and I need something. So it kinda goes when you talk about what people are getting paid. But realistically, if the research is done, if that's what it pays for that position and you have the documentation to back that up, then it is what it is. I don't think you should go cheap. And I certainly don't wanna get someone in here who's also gonna stay here for a short amount of time and leave. We wanna hire a good person, a qualified person, and someone else who will stay here for a long. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, please. I'm sorry, your name, sir. Terry?
Sorry. Thank you.
Jerry Hudson, resident. The current system has worked for the city and its former city manager. After all, we're doing things the way that we've always done them. If a long-term recovery due to the Elsachsen prevents the city manager from doing their job, then the council can do what they just did recently, appoint an interim city manager to do, fill the job. Until it's time that the city manager return or go through the process of hiring a new one. Also, this Assistant City Manager is an appointed position by the city manager. What happens if council, this or further council, decides to fire the city manager? According to the, what I've read, she is the only one who can fire the Assistant City Manager. So is the Assistant City Manager automatically can get fired if the city manager gets fired? Uh, talking about the finance department. It's a lot of jargon, looking, to me, it sounds like you're just looking for a reason to get rid of the finance department. Uh, need some specifics of why the finance department needs to go the way of the dodo current, that it's currently, um, organized. Concerning the city clerk's office, was there any sense to have outgoing exit interviews with former part-time, full-time workers? If turnover is the issue, then maybe the office is the problem. If we had hired a person for the city manager that already had experience instead of someone we are paying for on-the-job training, a person who is already certified instead of paying someone to get their certification on city time, they would, wouldn't be looking to hire, no, appoint someone to help her do the job, which she was not the most qualified. Thank you.
John?
Had a career in the military. I have a habit of moving people around. And one reason is that new rooms sweet clean, come in with new ideas. And it's part of the culture. And this city was blessed with 27 years of stability in the city manager. But it also was a trap and we saw the results. Budget process last year was a catastrophe that you guys are gonna have to fix. Nobody knew what they were doing. And the city's paying a price for it. And in fact, as I recall, we even had an auditor come in and look at some things and stuff. We have a new individual. I'm sorry that people feel they need to disparage somebody who, uh, doesn't have prior experience in the job. It was clear when Michael left, we had a disaster. And we've got to avoid having that again. And the idea of consolidating a bunch of activities that are now distributed, uh, I've gone through this, I've taken a look at it. I like it. I think it's a good idea. I'd say go ahead. And again, reviewing it, taking a look at it, or it doesn't fix, do you adjust it a little bit? Also, I guess the, uh, comments about the pay scale. I retired 20 years ago and I look at pay scales now and I sit there and say, man, I was terribly underpaid. But then the government tells us there is no inflation. It is what it is. It's been looked at, it's a reasonable range. Don't go cheap. You're gonna get somebody that's gonna turn around. We've done that with our Fire Department, we've done that with our Police Department. We certainly don't wanna do it at the highest level in the city. So we need to find somebody that's competent. And hopefully, my dream would be- And hopefully, my dream would be that we had a city manager and an assistant city manager slash whatever, who emulate what Michael did and retire out of fear 20 or 30 years from now, to give us that stability again. But again, you can't afford to have the case where something happens and all of a sudden you don't have somebody.
Steve Hedley, still a resident. I have some definite concerns about the plan. First, the numbers really don't match up. We're comparing apples to oranges and oranges to grapes within the numbers. Comparing old salaries to new salaries and expecting the same performance, but yet we pay in salary for a different performance. We have to acknowledge that. We have to take and look, because basically what's being said is, okay, we have the Crati salary available and we're going to pay because we have a new city manager with less salary, therefore we can, should, or whatever, back that in. And I'm not sure that's appropriate. I disagree on the fact that we're including benefits in this, not because, as far as I can determine, one of the benefits that is missing is Ms. Barker's transportation training and payment for her city manager's certification. I certainly believe that's a benefit that was brought forth on March 28th. We're still waiting, as far as I know, in the public, we're still waiting for the cost of that. I am deeply troubled by this appointed position. We have a certain setup in the city that gives a transparency. And in essence, what you end up with here is a person in the city government that is accountable only to one individual. They're not accountable if they break a policy, there's no recourse if they get told, if they get told to do something against the policy, there's nothing here. And basically, what you have is no accountability outside of a person overseeing. That's really troubling. Because I'm sorry, we have a system set up where city council oversees the city manager, but now we have a position that is not overseen by the city council or the citizens, chief resources director, nothing. The fact that that person does not have the same type of access to grievance, um, grievance policy, that's troubling as well. It just seems backwards. If you want to make an assistant city manager, fine, I understand the problems, I understand what's trying to be addressed, but I really think the best course of action, because I don't even know if the appointed position would happen, and this comes back to you Mr. B., would they have whistleblower protection? Who knows? But I would prefer that if you're going to do this position, that you make them accountable to such every day, my three minutes are up, accountable to, just as the rest of the city council or the city employees are, instead of just to one individual.
Steve, let me ask, I'll answer a couple of questions there. Our city charter governs how we're run and the council appoints the city manager and the city manager appoints all of the department heads. And all department heads report to the city manager. They don't report to council. We do not fire or hire those department heads. That's the way the charter of this city is set up by the people who wanted it that way. That was voted on. So, from the standpoint of having no recourse, our city manager is the governing body of the employees of this city and they report to her. They don't report to us as city council, because that's the way our charter is set up.
Can I ask a question? Same, same subject, same thing you just brought up. I agree, I mean, I read the charter again today. Um, but Jim, because of the situation, the city manager appointing a person, since it's, we're not appointing that person, can they be exempt from the personnel policy? Because that's what it says here.
I checked the labor attorney. It's a legal question. I'm asking our attorney that question.
She said she's already checked with the city's legal, um, lawyer.
Labor attorney. HR? HR, I'm sorry, HR, labor attorney.
Labor attorney.
Who is that? Mr. Helfe?
Mr. Helfe, yeah.
Do we have that in writing?
Um, I think so, yeah. I've got an email back, I sent all of this to him and...
Because it does seem odd that, like, I could see us appointing an assistant city manager and having a contract. We can do that. We can have a contract with anybody we'd like. But if the city manager hires an employee, I don't see how they can be, or a department head, I don't see how they can be exempt from the city's personnel policy which we adopted. And as I said, I mean, I have no problem with reorganizing or restructuring if it's done effectively and efficiently, but I think this is, I'm kind of blindfired by it, I'm not quite understanding it.
Let me finish. We're still in public comment, let me just go. Any other public comment? Here are none, closing public comment.
Um, I have, like, a number of things, there's a number of things said, sorry, this is going to be a long. With regard to the succession planning, succession planning is very important for a manager. And I had a succession plan in the place, the place I left and that's the first thing I thought of coming here. And I think a lot of people need to understand that I live here, so I've seen the council meetings for the past five years, I'm very familiar with the city, and I knew that there was a succession plan problem when I came in.
Excuse me, just one second. Mr. Gudis, please, back there so that everybody can hear the chatter in the back. Keep it down, please. Thank you. Courtney.
Secondly, the, the budget that I placed in here, it does not have, doesn't concern Mr. Crati's salary. He left before that budget year. The actual salary that was budgeted was Ms. Samuelson's salary. Um, so, the, this budget actually works within that realm. Um, so, Mr. Crati's salary is not, not part of this, these numbers here. The benefits, the benefits are budgeted in our, in our budget with regards to training, travel, things like that, as a separate operating expense. It's not, it's not considered a salary or a personnel expense, so that's why it was not included in there. In terms of the appointed position part of it, the labor attorney did review this proposal. I wanted this to be an appointed position largely because this is a very high-level position, that person needs to be on my train, just so to speak. Um, and I need to be able to, um, basically hire who I think is qualified for the position, but also let that person go if I don't think they're working out. And that has to do with ideas and managerial direction, which may not be stealing something or, um, you know, having a, the disciplinary, um, items that are in our personnel policies are pretty severe and that's, it's very difficult to let a public employee go, it takes a long time. Um, so, but that is the reason why I want it to be appointed position. I was an appointed employee where I came from. Many department heads in many cities are appointed employees. Um, in this city, our, our personnel policies are, again, antiquated, so we actually had to change that so I could do this, this way. None of this would be in the public realm if we didn't adopt our personnel policies by ordinance. Most cities don't do that. Most cities, this is a, the purview of the city manager, a reorganization like this would never occur in the public realm. It would do, it would be done as an administrative task and the only thing that would be approved by council is the number of FTEs in the budget. Um, so, it is odd for that to happen here. Um, the other thing I wanted to say is if I had any lack of confidence in my ability to do this job, I would not have laid or placed the finance director on administrative leave right before going into budget. So I think I have that covered, I have the confidence that we can easily go through budget, um, in, with my direction. The other item is that, um, when we move forward through the personnel policies, we do need to talk about some of this stuff and how some of this is in the public realm because, um, I do not enjoy having to put an employee on administrative leave, that's not something I wanted to do. But I felt that it was definitely necessary to move forward in, in the direction that I wanted to take City Hall in the city. But I did think that it was, it was unfortunate that that had to happen in a public meeting. So I think we do need to talk about how we move forward and when we redo the public personnel policies, how we handle those things in the future.
Thank you. Any further council comments, Mayor?
Yeah, I do. And being a former government employee myself, I know that it's typical to, when you go through budget, to reorganize during the budget process to eliminate positions or create new ones. So we are kind of doing it backwards and that's why I'm uncomfortable with it because it really should be done as part of a whole budget process. I don't understand the urgency, you know, the city manager's only been here for two weeks and all of a sudden we're creating a position. Um, and it's pretty clear, and I've heard back, that you guys presented this together at your town hall meeting, um, and Mr. Feint brought it up before this was even an agenda item. So I'm a little confused about that, but I am very, very concerned about it. And all employees, I went through the personnel policy, are also appointed here in Satellite Beach, but I'm very concerned about, we have a policy in place, it's archaic, I didn't adopt it, it was adopted in 1987, it's been amended, 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 here, there, here, there, but I can't, I don't understand how I can exempt somebody from those grievance processes without changing the policy first.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Gott, would you like to comment on this agenda item, please?
Would you like to comment on this agenda item?
No, I've already commented.
Thank you. Any further council?
I think at this point, Mr. Mayor, the action that's under this agenda item is to approve the organizational plan as presented, is that correct?
Correct, so I would need that motion.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilman, excuse me, Vice Mayor Breimer, seconded by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council?
And the city clerk, repeat the motion, Courtney.
To approve the organizational plan as presented to council.
Here are no further council comments.
I'm going to make one comment. I am going to support this just because I do believe this is a managerial government. I don't think it should be here, but I think it, elimination and reorganization needs to be part of the budget process. I think this was just done improperly, but having faith in the city manager, I'm going to support it because that's her plan, but I just think the way it was, was presented wasn't proper.
Thank you. Okay, and any further? Here are none, one more you poll to council?
Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Nothing. Before we move on to agenda item number 10, I will have a recess for about 10 minutes. Before we convene the meeting on agenda item number 10, which is ordinance number 1069, on council, just to make sure you have revision number two in front of you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jim?
Ordinance number 1069, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Satellite Beach Personnel Policy, Section 2, definition of terms, establishing an appointed employee, amending Section 12.01, job classification levels to add job classification Assistant City Manager slash Director of Support Services and salary range, to eliminate job classification, a finance director, to add job classification for HR Benefits Coordinator and salary range, amending Section 17 and 18 for consistency, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance 1069.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1069, revision number two on first reading.
Second? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, seconded by Councilman Montanaro, to adopt ordinance number 1069 on first reading. Council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, in section three of this ordinance, detecting of the position incorrect, it should be Assistant City Manager slash Director of Support Services?
That is on our revised number two that we have in front of us, Councilwoman.
Oh, okay.
I apologize you don't have it, but that correction has been made.
Okay, good.
Throughout the document.
Uh, Councilman Gott, throughout the document.
I have something that I brought to Courtney's attention that's not in here and after the storms of 2004, I went to a seminar and the reimbursement that cities get from FEMA after an incident, temporary workers, temporary workers' classification was, was part of the class. There was a city that actually had some extensive damage, it was Sanibel, and they brought in all these temporary workers to help their public works department get things done. And when they submitted their bill to FEMA, because they didn't have a temporary worker classification in their, um, job ranges, FEMA didn't cover it. So I brought that to Courtney's attention the other day and she tells me, she's got part of an answer, but I'll let you go ahead.
Uh, we, we've discussed it and we think we need to research it more, but I think what we've kind of come to the conclusion is that there's a difference between a pay grade and a status. So, for example, we have, you have a job, we may have a job classification for a staff assistant, but then their status could be temporary part-time, permanent part-time, or full-time. And a temporary is a status. So we may have to add that possibility of having that status into our personnel policies. Um, and we probably will have to, and that's probably going to be part of our ongoing discussions. But again, we need to just, from an emergency standpoint, management standpoint, figure out what that wording needs to be, what it needs to be called and so on and...
Well, that's, that's why I brought it to your attention. I mean, we can approve this tonight and if we have to do something to correct it wherever it needs to be done, I just wanted to make sure that whatever and however it needs to be worded, we make sure that we're going to be compliant with whatever they're looking for because if, if we do have a scenario that plays out where we hire additional people to come in to help public works, that we're going to get reimbursed for it.
I think, didn't we, when those last hurricanes hit, didn't we use the county or inmates or the inmates, I mean, the county supplied inmates? Wasn't there some scenario that we had?
There were some scenarios that played out where the county came in and helped us do some things.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, the fact still remains that if we're going to do something where we have to hire people, in order to get reimbursed, we have to have whatever language FEMA says needs to be in your, and that's, I think that's what we're going to be looking at is what do they require and then...
And I agree with you, I was just trying to...
Appropriate changes.
Sorry, I was just trying to refresh what happened in the past.
I went through the personnel policy handbook today. It isn't, the status is listed in it.
Temporary. And the other is, and we want, we just want to make sure that how we have it in there and what we call it is correct. But what we did in the past was these other organizations paid, so we filled out the, so in this case, we would be paying the employees and we would want to be reimbursed for that, which is something we haven't done before in the past. So we want to make sure that we can in the future.
Okay, good.
Any further council comments? Here are none, open up for public, public comments on this agenda item. Roger Gudis, resident, Satellite Beach. This ordinance that you're reading here tonight, is that the same one that has been published to the citizens of Satellite Beach on the city's website? Or has this been revised? And is there another copy sitting at the table?
There is revisions number two that have been provided at this meeting and it was just...
Are there sufficient copies there for all... Are there sufficient copies there for all the citizens present to see this ordinance change?
What would you like for me to do, sir?
Counsel, listen.
There are copies at the table?
There are copies at the table. I think it, staff's never going to know how many people are going to show up and how many exact copies we should provide on the table. But we have copies on the table for those that are interested. The other is, we made these changes within hours of the meeting. That sometimes happens. And the changes are non-substantive, language changes that are immaterial to, you know, any changing positions or anything of that nature.
And anybody would like a copy, we'd be more than happy to get you one. There's one right there. And I have a question next time. Is this going to be posted on the city's website within 24 hours? It will be, because it will be second reading at our May 15 council meeting. Thank you. Then I am walking over at the table right now. As a point of record, I should have a copy over there, correct? There is copies, if you don't, we will get you one. There's a copy someone will give you.
I have. You have it? Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hey, Ryan, resident. You guys have been here, been here a while, year and a half. You guys have been here about six months, you've been here two months. You're brand new. I know how it works. I understand how it works. You guys have the charter to guide you. You give guidance to the city manager. And I want to tell you, I think you're doing a great job. That's all. This is an example, this ordinance is an example of how the system works.
Any further public comment on this agenda item? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Any further counsel comments?
Could you repeat the motion for me, please?
With the recommended changes to Revision 2, meaning that they switched out, the title will now read Assistant City Manager/ Director of Support Services in all areas of the ordinance. They adopted Ordinance 1069 on first reading.
Okay.
Any further comment from council? Here are none. Will you please poll?
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Motion passes. Five nothing on first reading. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11. Courtney?
The previous actions and previous agenda items basically eliminated the Finance Director position. Because of that, the proposed severance, we feel is appropriate. There is precedent for this severance proposal, which is one week of severance for every three years of service. So we're asking you to approve that. We have some more information in the memos that was provided to you regarding the payouts to that individual. And this information was not placed on the website specifically because we felt it was a little personal and it was inappropriate to have that information on there. But we did pass it out to you. It is still public records, so if you're interested in it, we'll be glad to provide it to you. We just didn't feel that it was necessary to broadcast that on the web. But we will bring back any amendments to make that payout to you at the next meeting with the mid-year review.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
I just have a question. I'm a little uncertain why a severance is being brought in front of the city council? You know, just city manager discretion and...
Well, we did some reductions in force in previous years. And when we did that, we did provide severance, since this is a reorganization, it's very similar to that. So we felt that it was appropriate to provide the severance.
No, I understand that. But why is it in front of the city council for action? Isn't that just between the city manager and the department head?
No, because we, it's an unbudgeted item. And we would need to provide a budget amendment to you at the next meeting and get your approval
Any further?
You want a motion?
I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the severance package as outlined by the city manager. Second?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, seconded by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion further from any council member?
I just want to say that part of this reorganization and what's happening right now eventually saves the city money. Because we have a person who was part of the general employee's pension plan. And a new employee coming in is not going to be part of that plan. You know, you're talking about close to a half a million dollars in savings long-term based on the pension aspect of the position that's going away. And that's a substantial amount of money to the city.
Any further?
I'm just still bewildered. I mean, we don't have a contract with the chief financial officer, so I'm not sure why this is in front of us. Mr. Beadle, do we need to approve this? Isn't it up to the purview of the, I mean, I know the budget amendment would be our responsibility, but it's based on a recommendation of the, am I right, or no? In the past, council has approved this personally. Severance package? Yes. And I would prefer not to bring things like this to council. So maybe we talk about how you want to take this down in the future. Yeah, I think it's really peculiar. But I was trying to follow what, you know, the city's typical practices. But it is, you know, again, it's unbudgeted, so I would have to come back for that budget amendment anyway.
Jim, any comment on that?
I would defer to, I mean, I'm not that familiar with how the internal personnel policies of the city work. So, I mean, I've rarely been involved in that because that's generally gone with the labor attorney.
I'm just thinking, if it's the personnel policy, and that's what they're entitled to, then that's what they get. It's really not as... This is not part of the personnel policy. Oh, okay. Oh. I thought all this payout was...
Any further comment? Before I open up for public? Councilwoman Gott, any council comments on this agenda item?
Any comments on this agenda item?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. Roger Goodis, Satellite Beach resident. I hope citizens are aware of the total payout. I have had the privilege to review the agenda packet. But I also believe that it should be stated in front of citizens and on YouTube what the total payout package is, the amounts, dollar amounts, and where they're coming from, and this budget amendment, where it's coming from. Thank you. Any further comment from the public? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Counsel?
Just one thing I did, since we just got this yesterday, it does said the city has the precedence of providing one week of severance for every three years of service. So I misunderstood. I thought it was in the personnel policy. So it's not in the policy. So I apologize for my statement earlier.
Any further comment on this from any council member? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
I didn't hear the motion. I'm sorry. Can you repeat it?
Hold on a half second.
It was approved the severance package as outlined by the city manager.
Motion is to approve the severance package as outlined by the city manager.
Okay, thank you. My vote is yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Motion passes. Five nothing. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, Items for Regular, the next regular council meeting, May 15.
We will be presenting an item to you regarding equipment purchase for the fire department. It's a need-now, kind of an emergency equipment purchase. The other item is to, the easement vacations that we had in the previous agenda item, we will have those prepared in its entirety for you to vote on. We also have prepared, the city attorney and I, the interlocal agreement between the city and the community redevelopment agency for the chargeback of staff and administrative costs. And so that'll be presented to you upon your approval. That would go forward to the community redevelopment agency for approval. You have the second reading of the personnel policy ordinance you just voted on. And then we will be talking about your mid-year budget review, including revenues, as well as all budget amendments to date. We're hoping that those budget amendments will carry us to the end of the year. And then we will have an ordinance regarding some amendments we would like to make to the building and permit fees.
Any other agenda items that council would like to see on? If there is, and you want to add them at a later date, please get hold of our city Here are none. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 13, Appointments to Boards. Lenore?
I first want to clarify in the summary, the last statement that's in there, therefore, and discussing about the joint servicing of the chair from the PZAB to Board of Adjustment, I would like to withdraw that statement as it's not appropriate for city council and its dual office holding. You will note all of the resignation slash appointments that have taken place, and it's up to council for your consideration. I don't know if you want to just go through one or through the other. We would like to also schedule new applicants, since Barbara Montanaro was interviewed for PZAB, and she has now resigned. Being that it's a different board, it's, the normal practices would be that she would come back and to be re-interviewed for CEV. So what is council's wishes on that?
Counsel?
I don't, I don't think we need to interview again, myself, but...
I don't really have a problem with the re-interview, but I do have a legal question I might need to, friend of mine, Jim? Pick up over there. On the, I went through the code today, and code enforcement, you don't get compensated, but you do, can receive money for expenses. It's in our code. Is that an issue? Or do you need time to look into it?
I don't, no. I can look into it, but I mean, the issue, we'll only ask you the question, what is the issue? What's the issue?
Giving compensation and being a significant other of a council person.
I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, that's, I think there's some opinion.
Let me ask you, they're not receiving compensation. I think your first part of your question, Jim, isn't it?
It's not compensation.
They're getting paid back for the expense they put out if they have to do something for the city, so is that compensation?
But I think there are, I think there are opinions out there regarding specifically that issue. I just don't want to get in this situation again where there's another problem.
Okay.
I'll look into that. I have an answer tomorrow.
Is that reasonable?
Fine, yes. I don't want to make sure we do it right. That's the key. Okay. And to the issue to start, do we need to, or it's council wishes, do we need to interview Ms. Montanaro again?
The member of me.
Thank you. Okay.
I want to make sure to address that when you established the CERA Advisory Committee, there was not a liaison appointed to that committee. So that would be something I would think you would like to consider, who's going to attend those meetings as a liaison?
I thought, Cheryl, weren't you the liaison to that committee?
No, I was not here when you appointed liaisons. We didn't have the crack stamp. I was appointed to planning and zoning, but I wasn't here at the meeting.
Um, who, council?
Do you want to do it?
I attended the last one.
She's... I have the expertise to do it. I would... All right, you need, we need that nomination, or we just make it a consensus?
The consensus, good enough.
Yeah, that's fine. That's how we've done all the other ones.
Okay. Okay.
May I jump in? I'm having a very difficult time hearing what everyone is saying. Are we talking yet about the issue of the lack of qualm for the Board of Adjustment? Because it seems to me, if I may speak on that, there's a very simple solution to that problem, and that is to remove whoever is not attending regularly, remove them from the board, and replace them with new members who actually are interested in attending. I don't think it would be necessary or appropriate to establish some other special kind of arrangement when this is, you know, the procedure all along. If they are not attending, then take them off and replace them with somebody who will attend.
Thank you, Lauren. We're not on that one yet, but we will take that into consideration when we get to it.
Actually, it was pulled. That's the thing, Lenore pulled. So you may want to let her know that that's been pulled.
We pulled that issue from the last sentence in my memo for consideration. And we are now discussing the CERA Advisory Committee liaison appointment.
Okay.
And council has wanted to concur that Deanen serve as the liaison for the CERA Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to...
And I believe there was also a question about whether Barbara Montanaro needs to be interviewed for the Code Enforcement Board. Is that correct?
Council felt that there was no need.
Right, I agree with that.
I was going to make a...
Thank you.
I was going to make a motion to reappoint the regular member, Richard Kooling, to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 6/113.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, seconded by Vice Mayor Breimer. Can, pardon me? Term expiring, ending 06/0113.
It should be 15.
Yeah, it should be 15.
Should be 15.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Admin my motion to 15.
Same with the second.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Here are none. Poll the council.
I couldn't hear the motion.
They moved to appoint, reappoint Mr. Koolong to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 6/115.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Motion carries. Five, nothing.
I'll make a motion to reappoint regular member, Michael Hensley, to the Recreation Board, term ending 6/115.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, seconded by Vice Mayor Breimer.
And the motion was, what? Lenore, can you tell me what the motion was?
Yes. Reappoint Michael Hensley to the Recreation Board, term ending 6/115.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to appoint...
We got the motion, right? We need votes.
We got to vote. All right, I'm ahead of myself.
You ready?
Ready.
Please.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kay LaRue to the beautification board as an alternate member.
Yes.
Okay. Motion as an alternate.
I'll second it.
Seconded by, motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, seconded by Councilman Montanaro. Any further comment? Here are none, please.
Was that a, 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 Kay LaRue as an alternate to the beautification board?
Yes.
Okay.
Should there be a term date on that, Lenore?
Today's date.
And it says two-year position?
Yes.
So it would be...
6/115.
6/115.
5/1.
5/1.
5/115.
Okay. Make that change to the motion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Second also.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Okay. Make that change to the motion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Second also.
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Motion passes five, nothing. Moving on to.
I'll make a motion to appoint C.C. Packard to the planning and zoning advisory board, term ending 3/6/16, as an alternate position. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Would that motion appoint C.C. Packard to PZAB?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Motion passes five, nothing. Any other appointments that are needed at this time? Lenore?
Mr. Rodney Smith is an alternate member, we have a position available, a regular position. We'd like to move him up as normal practice for council.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilman Montanaro, to move Rodney Smith up into a regular member.
CPAB.
CPAB.
That was to move the alternate member Rodney Smith on the CPAB board to a regular member.
Okay.
And he's filling that term to 8/15/13, right?
Yes.
That needs to be part of it, I think.
Oh, it's on here, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine with me, yes, yes.
My devotion, second.
Remembered it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Think that got it all?
That got it all.
Okay. Okay.
Are we, do we need to go to enforcement board?
I think we decided to wait to see if there's an issue with the, not the compensation, but the payment of the expenses.
That's what we decided.
Did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
There was an issue about compensation with regard to the CEB, so Beadle will be reviewing it and bring back information on that before the appointment on the position for code enforcement with regard to council members' spouse.
Okay.
Here are no other business there, we'll move on to agenda item number 14, adoption of minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the April 17.
The mayor?
Yes.
The mayor?
Yes.
If we, are we appointing Tom Willett as a regular member of the board of adjustment? He's now an alternate.
On what board was that?
Board of adjustment.
Yes, we missed that one.
Okay.
Board of adjustment, Mr. Tom Willett.
Oh, yes.
My package, it seems that Robert Deedle has resigned, and that has created a regular vacancy. Tom Willett is an alternate. Do we want to go ahead and fill that tonight?
We do.
If so, I move that we appoint Tom Willett as a regular member of the board of adjustment.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Gott, second by Vice Mayor Breimer, to appoint Tom Willett to a regular member. What's the term?
Well, you have to find out what his term ended at, that's where you can put it in there. That's right. So you can, you can make the motion to end his term, whatever it is. Yeah. Serve out Mr. Deedle's term, that would be the motion.
Councilwoman Gott, will you amend your motion to reflect that? Lenore, can you ask?
Hold on.
Okay.
Would you amend your motion to show that Mr. Willett will serve out Deedle's term on the board of adjustment as a regular member?
Are you speaking to me, Lenore?
For Mr. Willett to move up from an alternate position to a regular position, filling Mr. Deedle's term, and he will fill that term according to the date Mr. Deedle's term was supposed to expire.
Okay, I'll make that first motion if there's necessary.
And I'll amend the second.
And Vice Mayor Breimer amends the second. Okay, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes. Okay, let's make sure, no more further business on that agenda item, is there? To anybody's best knowledge here, I think we've got them all. Okay, looks like we have. Okay. Now to agenda item 14, the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 17, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer to have a second. Second by Councilman Montanaro.
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Yes. One other, if I can find it, apologize. We got our property tax appraisal today, the taxable value change in Satellite Beach, it went up 5.5 percent, the second highest in the county. So, things are getting better. Any further?
Mayor, we need to cancel the June meeting, so, and.
Do you want to cancel it tonight, or, we need consensus on that, or do you want a motion?
I think consensus is fine.
Okay, consensus that we're going to cancel the June 1st meeting.
You got it.
Okay.
And then you need to accept the cancellation for Councilwoman Gott's meeting, but do you need a motion for that, or?
No, I think the Councilwoman Gott's meeting, town meeting, she's going to cancel it for May.
Consensus.
Consensus, thank you.
So we need to, okay.
Okay. Any further business for the board?